All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axerson County Commission meeting for Tuesday, July twenty, July first. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call.
Commissioner Quinn?
Present.
Commissioner Noel?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
All right, um, we have Mr. Formod down for invocation, um. However, he is not here, so please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comment. Being none. Um, the. Okay, approval of the agenda. I do have an addition under the finance directors. Uh, portion, we're gonna add the twenty twenty six budget R and R. Discussion. So with that addition, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So move second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Next is the consent agenda. We have the commission meeting minutes from June twenty fourth and then the finance director reveal.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, we have payroll, um, on this Thursday, July third. For hundred ninety-three thousand nine forty-three forty. Um, the total expenses for tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, July second is eighty-nine thousand three thirty-seven fifty-three. And out of that total credit card total is four thousand three ninety-six ninety-six.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. As presented.
So, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I'm going to. Really quick, print a copy of the minutes. All right, well, those are printing, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Campbell?
I don't have anything this week.
Commissioner Noel?
I just wanna thank the, uh, Axerson County Farm Bureau for inviting me to their annual supper. Uh, this week, uh, is informative and it's nice to socialize with them folks and. I just wanna thank them very much. Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, did either of you make it out to the county lake meeting Friday night?
Yeah.
You did?
Didn't see anybody out there. Should I don't know if they, they changed location.
Really?
Ian's house is where it was supposed to be.
Oh, okay. I thought it was at one of the shelter houses. So that's that. I just missed the location.
Yeah, I know that he said that when he was here, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, from last week, I just wanna say congratulations to, uh, First Steps Daycare in the Abbey for the groundbreaking last week. I was unable to make it on Monday, but just very exciting, um, for our county, um, for the collaboration that they're doing. Um, Tuesday evening, I had a northeast can, uh, northeast Kansas multi-county health interview for an executive director role. Um, I did attend the Farm Bureau State Dinner as well, which was, uh, really nice. Thank you to Anton and his wife for the hospitality. Um, and then, yeah, I didn't make it to the county lake meeting on Friday, so. Um, that is all I have. Oh, sorry. I signed down your lines. No presentation of petitions or proclamations this week, um, so we're starting off new business with Mark Zeltner, Finance Director. Consideration of bond payments, consideration of P O for jail A C unit, consideration of P O for twenty twenty-four audit services. Twenty twenty-six budget R and R.
Okay. The first one is for the road bond payment. It's payment six of fourteen for three hundred and three thousand. And fifty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, the remainder to pay of this is roughly one million two hundred and five thousand. So we got about eight more payments left. Oh, so we paid all the road and bridge budget.
Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director to the Kansas State Treasurer in the amount of three. Hundred and three thousand fifty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. This is payment six of fourteen for the road bond.
Also moved, sick.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to.
And the second one is for the bridge bond. Um, same to the Kansas State Treasurer out of the road and bridge budget. It's payment fourteen of twenty. For two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The remainder to pay is six hundred and seventy thousand after this payment. And then, just like the other one, we pay two payments a year. One's a principal and then one's an interest payment.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to.
Okay, the next item is I have a purchase order. Uh, for the rooftop unit, electrical supply, lift charge and labor for the jail A C to Dunn Heating and Cooling. Payable out of the reserve fund for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand one twenty-nine thirty. With that. We had discussions about paying for it out of reserve and then putting it back into the twenty twenty-six budget. To levy it, to put the money back into the reserve fund out of what we paid from there.
And what does this, when we approve this, what does that put our reserve balance at?
Roughly four hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Thank you. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director out of the re- reserve fund. Um, for rooftop unit, electrical supply, lift charge and labor for the jail A C. Um, and in the motion also that we will put this amount back into our jail budget under capital. Um, so that we can. Or maintenance, either way, so we can put this back into our reserve. Um, fund.
So this.
Yeah, please.
This a- amount, is this what we approved last year or is this?
So. According to the minutes that's attached in there, the very last page, there is no motion that the board approved any. They just.
Is this the same P O? I mean, this.
It's the same company that the maintenance director.
Is it the same figure?
No. It's higher.
Okay.
Because that first estimate expired.
I just wondered if, you know, I'm still clear behind that.
It appears we went through the motion. We had bids. We opened bids. For the replacement unit and then we just, our maintenance director didn't come back with a recommendation, so we didn't actually formally do the P O, but we'll have all the.
You have that.
Minutes of.
And the bid opening.
Yeah. Recommendation to move, oh, there was a recommendation by Director Oswald to move forward with Dunn Heating and Cooling. Um, so we just didn't have a vote on it. So at least we have all of the, the information of what.
And that'll stay with all of the documentation, so if we need to refer back to it, we can.
The, the one thing about the, the amount is, if I remember right, what was the date of these, these minutes? Um, October twenty-nine.
So the estimate expired in November.
But we were, were we anticipating to use ARPA dollars for this? Cause we still had them, I believe.
I think that's.
I don't know.
Our intention was, and that slipped through.
Yeah, yep. So, okay. All right, cool. Well, look for a motion, um, to approve this expenditure out of the reserve fund. And then plug it back into the twenty twenty-six budget to replenish the reserve fund.
So, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes.
Now, is there a talk, is it gonna be this fall or will it be?
Yeah, so there's a build time of fifteen weeks. Uh, so, yeah, it would be this fall. They don't wanna do it when it's too warm or too cool, so. They'll, um, coordinate either Brian and or Jack will coordinate with Dunn Heating and Cooling to get it done.
Clarify, when you say from the twenty twenty-six budget, you mean from the. A specific twenty twenty-six budget?
It would just be county general.
Okay.
Cause depending on whether it's in the jail or the, the county general department, it's still county general fund, so.
So for, um, reference purposes, do we need to have it in the?
Think we would put it in the jail.
Jail. That way they can look back and know the date and.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so this other item. Is a purchase order to Varney and Associates, which is our auditing firm for the twenty twenty-four audit. It is completed and will be delivered next Tuesday. Um. The audit for the twenty twenty-four is fifteen thousand dollars. We also expensed more than. The threshold for the single audit, so we had to have a single audit, which was budgeted for in twenty-five. Um, it was fifteen hundred dollars, so for a total of sixteen thousand five hundred payable to Varney and Associates. And that, it will come out of the county general department in the county general fund. It is budgeted.
And the single audit was because of the ARPA, yep.
Yeah.
All right, so I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
So you say they're coming next week?
Yes, next Tuesday, the eighth of July. So. Before July fifteenth, we need to give this notice of revenue neutral rate intent to the county clerk so that she knows. What's going on with the R and R rate. Um, and the hearing so that that can be put on the R and R notices that go out to citizens and can be publicized. Um, we determined that we have this meeting and then next meeting left to do that. So having the discussion this week, that if we can't come to a number this week, we must do it next week, but. We have thirty minutes to kinda figure that out. Um, we have the date of our hearing, which is August twenty-sixth at six P M at Memorial Hall, eight nineteen commercial. What we need to do for the rest of this form is put in our proposed mill levy rate. There's a spot for that on this form. Which coincides with the spot on the R and R notices that Susan will mail out. Or have mailed out. Um. Currently with putting that dollar figure back in. To pay for the jail A C unit, putting that back into the reserve fund. And keeping all other totals constant that I give you the last week or two. We are at. Sixty-eight point nine five one mils. So if we have some items that you want to reduce, we can figure that out. I can plug it in to kinda see where you wanna be. Um. Whatever you wanna do. I've already given my recommendation on how to move forward, but. It's your call.
I think if there's anything that we. And know that we're willing to take off, we get it down that much. Before we set the R. It's mine.
I would go with the recommendation you gave to us, um, Mark, as the finance director of. And also, um, at the Farm Bureau State Dinner, uh, they had asked us for county updates. Um, and so you had given us our mills last time.
Right.
Uh, or last week without the air conditioner. And so, um, I gave that update because they had asked for it, so, um. After, I mean, I reading your recommendation. Um, that morning, I just stuck with it, like.
Yeah, I just had thought, I mean. Cause we get all the asks in, so then you know what the number is. Then you don't have to ever second guess why did we go with that number? It's, it's all figured. But.
And it's, and also when we certify that, there's nowhere to go but down.
Right.
And then.
We go down.
When the public shows up on August twenty-sixth. You know, you can start with where the notice came out and where the commission currently stands. Showing, to your point, us working for, for them of, you know. And then kinda start the meeting with that, like, this is where we were based on asks. This is where we are based on due diligence of the county commissioners. And then. Show them, you know.
Yeah, we had, we were gonna do a, a proposed column and then a commission revise call to see how, to prove how much you guys produced down.
I like that.
You could also. Have this figure and, and show it, e- even though it's not the R and R figure, but you could say, this is our ask figure, which is sixty-eight point nine five one. This is where we started from. We said R and R because we've agreed to that this is at least the minimum we were willing to cut that just at the R and R. Still planning to go only. Further. To, to make more cuts after the hearing or, you know, after the, the R and R had been set. Uh, I think you just. And it seems inflammatory to. Publish that. And then the moment they walk in, they say, well, that's not the figure after all, it's here. I mean.
I, I don't know. I like the fact that they can, uh, look at the difference between where we started and where we ended up, but. Um, we talked about. Putting both figures on there at one time, like maybe. You know, have this sixty-eight point nine, whatever they said, and then. Whittling it down before we send it out with a, with a preliminary. Figure, so having two figures on it. That, that, that would help, I think, to your point, cause you're saying, you're, you're, you're not fully for the, the big number. No, so what I'm saying is a. As a way, you know, to, to meet the middle somewhere, you could have the. You know, the initial number and then we could by next Tuesday. I think have it down to where you could have actually two numbers. You could have.
Well, you, you only set one.
I know you said it, but I'm just saying. That, that's the only way to, before the, before the public meeting. To let them understand where we started and about where we're at. That's about the only way to, that's the only way to do that is to show two figures. Uh, I don't know that that's necessary. I, I think that we could show them the. The initial figure and then when they get there, go, okay, just so you know, this isn't, we, we have worked on this and this is where we're at.
And to both of your points as far as like. The anti-freakout factor of if we're gonna put the survey questions in an informational. Page in there too, we could do an R and R informational of like. So that they know, like, this is the asks that we got and now the county commission has, you know, four weeks to. To dive in, to redo, to reduce down. So it's educational. When you read it, you're like, oh, well, they're gonna do their work in the next month to. It's just time is of essence and I don't think we're gonna make the, I mean, we make those decisions in a, in a week when we're trying to get the survey questions out in a week. Too, I don't know. And to Finance Director's point of. I think for everyone, even those entities that come and ask us for the dollars, right? They're receiving this to understand, like, this is what. Everybody that comes to the county and, and has a need, like, this is where we land and then it's up to us to. Whittle down what that looks like.
So, uh, help me understand so that. We settle on the number that we're sitting out, sending out to the taxpayers. Um. How does that coincide with? I mean, she's, that, that's the same notice that she's sending out. What about the state notifying the state? Is it the same? Does it happen at the same time?
Same thing.
Okay. Um. So we're, what about the figure that we, d- does the state wanna any kind of a figure that we're a target figure or are they just saying? Because they're asking if we're gonna exceed.
Yes.
And we're gonna say yes.
Right.
Uh, we don't have to provide any kind of a ordinary figure, okay?
No, that just provides to them that you are capping it at that and you cannot exceed that number that you provide.
Okay, I got you.
Got you. They don't care about your number until you certify to the clerk by August or, or October first. That, then they'll want to know that, I figured.
Well, yeah, so I could go either way. I, I. I, I, I think based on your, uh, uh, response at the dinner. With the public, I think that's just the way to go. Give them the, give them the figure. And we have nowhere to go but down.
And we're following the recommendation from the finance director, which I think is important.
And I only say that because last year at this time. It was said, why did we go with what you chose? Well, here's a way to pr- to prove why you did what you chose. I mean. If you ask me again next year, I'm gonna say, I don't know. Ask yourself. Like, we wanna try to figure out and do better, but.
And gain trust and explain the process and educate the public.
But even when we set that. And it was almost said that that was an arbitrary number.
If.
After we met with the public, we still came back, uh, a mill and a quarter, I, I believe that's the figure, less. Even though it seems. Draconian or whatever that we just set that, uh, that mill levy, we still, after, after meeting with the public. And at their insistence, we still came down, so we could do that, we could. If there's anything left on the bone, we could do that again, but it has to be there. We don't have our foot, so.
But that's why we have it. That's why we have the, the hearing when we do, right? In August, so that we still have time to.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Now, I, I, yeah, short of, short of having. A second figure in there, which I don't know that it's gonna do any good because I'd like to have time that, that, the. Three to four months to actually. Uh, narrow down exactly what we can live without. Cause that's just. That's, that's the reality is that you have to.
So I think I have a, a different way to ask. What number? Would you prefer to put on this sheet? And what if the board can't do it? Say like we go back to fifty-seven, what if the board can't get to fifty-seven?
Well, I, yeah, I, it has to be. Feasible. Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that.
Sure.
It's fifty-seven. But that's eleven mils.
Fourteen.
Hmm? Fifty-seven, sixty.
We're at fifty-four and change, I think, is where we, right?
I think you guys are talking about different numbers.
The, uh, R and R last year was fifty-seven.
Oh. I thought you meant where we landed.
No.
Okay, so, um. Then do we want to make a motion and vote on what to certify on the notice? All right, so I would make a mo- can I make? I usually ask for a motion. Am I able to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we certify on our R and R notice for the twenty twenty-six budget. The actual mills after meeting with all of our department heads, elected officials and appropriations. At the, that the finance director has given us of sixty-eight point nine five one mils. And that to note that we cannot exceed that, but we can definitely reduce that.
So.
Okay, so I made, sorry, I made the motion looking for a second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes two to one.
Would you like me to fill out that form now?
Sure.
Last year, you guys had wanted to sign this, so I'm gonna print it so you guys can sign it. If that's still the wish.
Okay.
And then once it's signed, we'll give it to Susan. She'll put her seal on it and sign in as well.
And will not send it until we get you next week, our survey questions and an informational brochure, right? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, there's still.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that. We need to get our ducks in or one of those things.
This, this form will accompany it.
Okay.
It's just something formal from the workbook to provide this, the number.
So you just want us to sign?
Yes.
Anywhere?
Mm-hmm.
And I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, so I know these will be, uh, mailed out to all taxpayers. Can we also put this on our website and social media with an explanation to try to like. Educate people that you'll be receiving these in the mail and this is what it, you know, this is what it is and this is what it means and then.
Right, we'll coordinate that. Um, just probably before it gets sent to the printer.
Okay.
So that.
Just so people know, right? Because I know that they like that information to understand what they're receiving, why they're receiving it. And then we can also share that so that it takes some of the edge off of. Not known.
Sure. Okay, all right, hon.
So we have twenty-eight minutes. Would you wanna? So we have twenty eight minutes. Would you wanna move your executive session up at all or?
The only, the only thing I don't know, a, a county attorney.
Oh, that's true. Okay, well, so, um. I guess we can, I can. Keep going. Because we still have unfinished business, uh, for the survey questions. Is R and R info items what we just?
Yes.
Okay. And then, okay, so we will, um, stick with Stacy Wagle with eleven. And in the meantime, I have a letter for the Judicial Nominating Committee, a letter of interest. That I would read, um, so we have been advertising for, gee, a month. Not more than a month for someone to serve on the first ju, district judicial nominating commission. And we received a letter of recommendation. So I'll read that to Atchison County Commissioners. I understand you are looking for a volunteer for the above mentioned position. I would be willing to serve in that capacity if my services, if my services needed. If someone else comes along and is willing, feel free to bump me to the rear. Sincerely yours, Steve Kaplinger. So that position did not have to be.
It can, can.
Okay, perfect. So I would look for a recommendation to appoint Stephen. W Kaplinger to the First District Judicial Nominating Commission.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All aye.
Passes three to zero. Congratulations, Steve, and thanks for volunteering. Um, in future weeks under the notices and communication, can we go ahead and add now that we set the R and R budget hearing? Just the August twenty sixth date, so it's on all of. All of our agendas, so people can put that on their calendar too, just.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, awesome. Alright, so survey questions, we were going to bring survey questions today, um. To discuss, to put together for the R. R and R notices. Oh, that was something else that was. That was brought up at the Farm Bureau State Dinner was. That. They've. They questioned whether we should. Survey the entire county. And believe it should only be surveyed to folks that have homesteads. In the rural parts that would be affected by a change as such, um, so.
They thought the.
The vote.
Vote would only go to.
So, just wanting to bring that up.
That would be subject to the zoning. And that since the city of Atchison doesn't zone, I mean, they already have their own form of zoning. That they wouldn't be a participant in the vote. Is that? Hold anymore? Because the, it doesn't affect them, their.
And I used the example of a gentleman living in town that owns. Farmland in rural areas and they believed it should only be the. The homestead, the folks living there because they're the ones affected by it, not necessarily just farmland. Um, so I guess why I'm bringing this up is we're developing this survey to send out with R and R notices to everyone and. Just if, are we, are we going to utilize that data that we receive in decision making because. It was just brought up, so wanted to, I just thought of that when I read my first survey question that I had put together earlier.
Yeah, I didn't have my note, had to, to write that down because I thought that was interesting. I hadn't really thought of it that way before, um. Is there a way of, does that, that sound like it would hold any weight? I mean.
Well, I, I don't think there's any legal requirement on sending out a survey of who you send it to and who you get information from. Uh, certainly the people that are going to vote on any question are the electors. Uh, so that is people that are registered to vote, so people that are above age eighteen. Just through the regular process of registering to vote and even people who don't own land. Would be able to vote on any of the questions that would come up. Um, it, it's really a, a function of how much information you wanna gather. Uh, I suppose you can even put in the survey to ask whether the person is a, a landowner or. Whether they own a homestead or whether they own that. Agricultural land or industrial land or something like that. Well, I think you have a lot of discretion.
Okay.
So the. So the question is. Is District One gonna vote? On this and you're saying yes. It isn't just, I mean, what.
Well, and even my district, majority is city of Atchison folks that live in my district. I mean, based on my rural folks, so. Um, just trying to understand it, but I think the goal of our survey not just being targeted to zoning, but to all. Other things, like I still think we're, we should move forward. I just wanted to bring that up because it. When I looked at my possible questions, starting with zoning. It just triggered my memory from Wednesday, so.
So is it the questionnaire or is it the actual decision on zoning? That they're saying is gonna be solely.
I think it was the, the actual vote, but then I think what to, i- if that was true, I think it would slash. How you asked your question. Awesome. But the, the actual vote on whether or not. The county should adopt zoning is just a free view. Uh, if there, there's nothing that we just have an election for. Landowners who live in rural areas.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, the, all three of us. Will make that decision. It, it's, or would be making that decision at some point if that was. The case, so I'm, I'm not sure I. Not sure I know. Exactly what else.
Well, I think it came from some of those questions at our zoning meeting. If you remember, Mr. West stood up and said. I think everyone should have an opportunity to vote on this. It shouldn't be left to three county commissioners and then. Someone else that, and so it's all stemming from, no, it should just be the rural residents with homesteads that should vote on this and so. That is, what I'm hearing is that is not. We do not have the ability to separate out who votes for a question, whether it's on any ballot.
If, if it went to a ballot, if it went to a ballot.
Okay, okay.
You can sure send out a, a survey.
Which our survey is gonna go to everybody, so that's.
Well, I think the survey. We talked about this should be more than just.
Yep.
No, it's only questions.
Absolutely.
More inclusive than that, so it's gonna. Now, we did talk about possibly splitting up. And mailing two different versions. I think there was some talk about doing that, if you.
Remember that.
Well, I thought I heard maybe. One of you say that we could, if you're stuffing envelopes, you could. Send zoning questions out.
No, we're not stuffing envelopes, so.
Well, whoever.
Be a, a different company and they're all gonna need to be the same.
Okay, right, so yes, and I think it all has to be. Zoning, uh. You know, my, my, one of my things was gonna be satisfaction, uh, service, satisfaction of the major county services. Uh, and I think we need to be included on that because I've got all of our major. Departments and then I, but I left us out, so I would think that we're gonna have to be on there. Commission.
So you, so satisfaction of services, then are you satisfied with our county services and then you're going to list them? Is that what you're asking? Yes or no? And then each, each of us?
It's not like, well, specific service, but just the department that, that fall under and then, uh. It would have a one through five rating.
Okay.
Is what I would. So.
And just the departments that deal with the public, not necessarily, because like, are, we have internal departments such as H R I T. Maintenance, just the election.
I'll just show you what I have, so I just put in commissioners. EMS and, and then the, the question I have, on fire and rescue, could we, even though. Technically fire isn't. Yeah, either township, can we put that on there? Is there any reason?
Are they fire out?
I think we can do rescue, EMS rescue.
I can't do fire and rescue, okay. Um, Sheriff Department. Road and Bridge, and then I put courthouse services, but. It, that covers. All of them, is that too big? Is that too broad?
I think we should individually list them probably.
Good. And then I've got solid waste. Uh, landfill. Um, if, if you think we should add, we can add, but I think that covers the major.
He was awesome. So are we gonna add joint communications? The public does give feedback on, on that. It would be helpful for the sheriff to probably, if we're gonna survey people, I mean.
Yeah.
To provide that information back to them.
No, that's, yes, that's, yes, yes.
How many questions are we?
That's just one.
No, that's multiple question, I mean, that's.
Well, so. Are you satisfied with our county services and then just rating them one to five based on, would you do? What was your scale? One being the best, five being the worst?
Well.
Okay, five.
Yeah, five is the best.
Best.
Yeah.
And again, this is still rough. I'm just making notes as you're saying. Us, best, worst, scale. One through five. Okay.
And then another one was communication. How do you prefer to receive Ashland County information and updates? Um. And then basically you give the same, you give. Four or five. Uh, choices and then one through five. And then I, I've got Atchison County website. Facebook page. M S C News slash Care Radio. Ashland Globe. And. County Commission meetings online and in person. And then if you wanted to, you could put other social media outlets.
What are yours? I'll add them.
I didn't, maybe I have.
Okay. Did you, you have others?
Well, we can, we can kinda collaborate on the ones that are zoning related. Um, I think we should lead off by saying, by asking. Let's see if I wrote this another way. Well, let's just be right up front with them. Are you in favor of corporate wind farm and solar farm operations? Uh. Adjacent to property, you know, just something of that, the fact it doesn't have to be that exact wording, but. That, to me, that targets. What we're talking about.
But that starts to bump into. You're trying to direct them into a zoning. Sitting in yes for zoning. You could also ask the same question. Could you, would you be for allowing, uh? Uh, owners of private property to, uh, to lease their own ground to. Uh, to, uh. Power stations. So that it becomes more of a private, uh, a. Property of rights thing instead of. Uh. Just kinda saying, well, they're, they're coming, so we're gonna have to zone to get rid of them now.
I added that question, so, because. I see what you're saying, like both sides, so. I had almost exact what Mr. Campbell's. Has on that one too of, I said, should Atchison County set a minimum distance from your home for commercial wind energy? Solar energy, rock quarries, that thing, um, moving in, so it's kinda the, the same and then to your point. Would you be in favor of allowing property owners to lease their property to whomever they choose? Like, it's kind of like, you know, but it. I think the goal of this too is to get people thinking, right? Like, no, I don't want that to be. Right across the fence from me, well. Tough, there's nothing, we, you know, we can do to, to prevent that for you, um, and then to your point of. It's my property, I, I'll lease it to who.
Property rights.
Yeah. Um.
So my follow on question.
Okay.
Uh, from the first one, which I think needs to be directly under this one, are you in favor of zoning? A zoning ordinance that targets wind and solar. Farm corporations that gives Ashland County residents protection. When confronting. Outside corporations moving into. And occupying adjacent property. That land to your property, I'm sorry. That, that's a long question, we can. Narrow that down.
Can you say that one more time? Cause I think I can collaborate the three of them.
So what I said was, are you in favor of a zoning ordinance that targets wind and solar? Farm corporations. That's one sentence and then that gives Ashland County residents protection. When confronting. Uh, outside corporations moving into and occupying land. Adjacent to your property.
Again, I think that's. That's. Directing the public, because you're saying that.
They're coming in. They can say no. I mean, that's, that's the whole point of it, they can say no.
Well, but there's all different kinds of ways of asking questions to get a specific answer that you want. It's called a push poll. You ask questions, it's like you've, you put the scary words out there, so people say, oh, yeah, I'm. If you're kinda on the bubble, it's like.
Yeah, scary words, scary words, zone. If I, if I were gonna do that, I'd just leave that word out. If I were trying, I'm, I'm saying it, I'm using the Z word, so if somebody doesn't like it, they can say no. That's, that's the point of. And we don't have to, but these are just ideas, we're, we're still spitballing here, we don't have to deal with that.
No, I think it's gonna continue to spitball, like, we'll get some ideas on paper, we'll read them, we'll reread them, we'll ch, cross them out, reword it. It's, this is just like the beginning of our, of our brainstorming here.
Yep.
And, and it's interesting because a lot of mine that I have here is rough drafts. You guys are both kind of echoing, so I'm just trying to merge them together to get kind of a, a starting point. The others, guys?
Well, I have one that's still in, I work in progress on the, on the issue of, uh, sales tax. To, to, uh, fund. Oh, what do I have? I've got. Well. I've got the EMS ask, and I've actually, I've got the A C unit ask. The Sheriff's Department on here too, which. I mean, I know we just. Proved the PO for that, but um. You know, if you're gonna put it right back into the twenty six budget, it could still be a. Theoretically, that could be a question, right, if. Cause we're talking about. Putting it right back into the twenty six budget. So this could possibly be a. That could still be on there, I mean, I I, you know, and then I was. Thinking about your your ask also, which is to upgrade the. Election equipment, which I think is valid. Now, is that a statute? Requirement that says you have to upgrade, is that what that is?
I don't know about that.
Because. That that would be legitimate for me, as far as if I heard that, I would think, well, yeah, you. By statute, you have to have the equipment, you know, the. Certain.
We have to have working operating equipment. Um, I suppose you don't have to, because you could do everything all manual. You know, I guess technically, they're they're used to, but it's it's would be. Very hard to meet, I think, the deadlines. On the voters, um. Yeah. Uh requirements too, because that was a big thing, that two or three years ago. I mean, there are a lot of people in our county that were. Questioning and and making sure on on the voter.
So.
Information, whatever.
If we're gonna ask you a question about. Sales tax, I I would like to. Maybe explain. Like, you you know, explain the group. That is going to be uh. Contributing, the 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 wide range of. Folks that will contribute, you know, uh in a way of sales tax versus. Specifically going back to property owners every time, you know, and. Uh for those who don't. Quite understand the scope. Cause there is a, there is a pretty wide. You know, we're talking about capturing. VC students, their their uh sales tax, if they would. I contribute to um. Also, anybody, anybody driving through town. From out of state that stops in for. Uh gas, food, retail. They're gonna also contribute to that. So I I I think that we need to. Preface the question, like, would you be in? Favor of sales tax that specifically funds vital county service. Expenses, and then either follow it or preface it with. Uh an explanation of why we think the sales tax. So it would be better um an increase.
I think that's a wonderful idea. And I also think that that just um helped me with informational brochure of what that looks like, because we should. We should totally target our informational brochure. To explain these questions, right, so whether it's. EMS. Election security or maintenance of our facilities. In that informational sheet, we can do everything you just said of explain. The population base it'll it'll bring in, and also. It's easy to show our facilities that need, I mean, Brian has identified our tuck pointing of the courthouse and. You know, Memorial Hall and all all these things that we have, and then the EMS numbers. Speak for themselves with Amber Wells, you know, um reiteration of what they see, and it's just. I think that will make our informational sheet be very easy and straightforward to put together, to just marry the two together of. You're opening this, what are you looking at, you're looking at an R and R notice, you're looking at questions, and you're wondering why. There's the informational sheet to to tie it all together to to help people understand. I mean, we can even do some photos, you know, some things that really. Are good, they're helpful.
Yeah, and I and I hope to get. Narrow down some of the information I talked about earlier, um I'm hoping that I can get. More information. Because you you think about the percentage. What how do I put this, revenue that comes from outside. You know, the county, we have a major road. Through town that draws. Traffic through town, so we know, and we have folks that are coming in from. Adjacent county shopping. Here in town, so there is a. I I'm sure there's a pretty big number. If we can just. We can find it, and I'm I'm trying to do that, uh but it's, so we'll.
That's great.
Yeah, we'll try to add that. Figure in there.
Okay. You know, I had a few questions about um. The real estate taxes, but I'm deleting them, because after going through this and. I think that the real estate taxes, the goal could be in the informational sheet. I mean, because really, it's our job to. Be able to articulate the why, right, why are we funding these outside agencies, why are we funding, you know? And it's our job to articulate how it all ties together from. Mental health at the guidance center, project concern, taking care of, you know, homebound folks that can't have nutrition meals and and different things, so. Uh and to your point of keeping it short, sweet, to the point, I think, you know. This will allow us to gain some really, some really great information, um along with. The educational piece, so I think this is a good start that we just threw together and we can, I'll I'll print it out, we can keep. Working on it, I'll try to work on an informational sheet um based on this, and then we can kind of look at it again next week. That sound okay? Okay. We have one minute till bid opening, so um. Stacy, if you enjoyed, you wanna come on up, we have the solid waste director, and here at eleven AM. Uh we will do a bid opening for the chute. We have one bid. Right here, so.
Office twenty six is at seven PM.
Six at Memorial Hall. I'll let you do that, and I'll give you the opener.
Oh, we're supposed to open?
Yeah. Here's a opener on the side of this for you. Okay, so it's eleven o'clock, so.
Okay, this is for the chute repairs. On the west side of the chute, this is from P one Construction of Saint Joe. Project Manager Bryce McClure, the bid is for. Fifty thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars, the alternative bid for the three eighths inch plate is for fifty three thousand. Seven hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Jody, is that what you were expecting, I mean, the three eights was what you were?
Well, quarter inch is what it is, and what it it's always had on it, but we was beefing it up more this time. So I think the quarter inch would work. But. For. A little more than three grand. Do it heavy and be done, maybe. You know.
Yeah.
Would be my thought.
Do they have a timeline on that, or do we need to?
Well, I know when I talked to him, when he come out, look, the last time we did it, uh we closed Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
And this is the company that did it last time? So they're aware of what it takes.
He talked about. Doing that same thing, that way they had Sunday to. Finish up if they had anything to do Sunday.
So your recommendation is the three eight inch for fifty three seven fifty seven.
I would say.
Can we create a PO on that and? Thank you.
Is this budgeted?
No.
Weren't you gonna bump the trailer?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we talked about it.
Yeah.
She budgeted for a trailer.
Recycling trailer.
Yep, and instead of that. This takes precedent.
Thirty something. Yeah, I don't remember exactly how much we budgeted for that. Yeah.
And the chute, can you explain, like, this is a. A need. Right now, I mean, it's not something we can put off, or can like.
It it is bad.
And the longer we put it off, the more of a chance we have of it actually breaking off and falling into that trailer.
Which would stop our operations.
And cost us a trailer to hands.
Okay, no, thank you, I just. I think it's important for a refresher of why this is a critical.
Right.
To move forward with. And then your plan would be. Close a Thursday, a Friday and a Saturday, and then notify the public how far in advance of that. Like, what, do you have a?
Well, I think we'd have to wait and see.
See when they can do it, and then just.
But I'm sure it'll be far enough, I'm sure it'll be a couple of weeks.
Regulate that on the website and social media, so people know.
Like Ron Bay. I talked to him this morning, when I uh and he uh, I told him, I said. Just a heads up, Ron, and he's like, oh, I said. We're gonna go open a bid for the chute repair. And we're probably gonna be closed Thursday, Friday and Saturday, oh, man, you're killing me. But he he said, I'll figure it out, I said, well, you did the last time, so.
We'll be able to notify the public.
Yeah, right. We'll put it on the website.
Well, Effingham, they open that.
The thing is, if Effingham's open, that's gotta go somewhere, so you you. But once it gets full there, you gotta stop.
Yeah.
Because there's nowhere to. Take it, you know, so I mean, yes, we could, well, we're not open on Wednesday, Thursday.
That's Saturday.
Yeah, they could be, yeah. As long as we don't get a bunch of people thinking they can.
Yeah.
And once it's full, it's full, you know.
Yeah, it's.
Both hands.
Still the same thing, you can't take a big load out there, you know, so if they drive Claire from Acheson with a whole pickup load. Sorry, you gotta turn around and take it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but potentially, if you had some small operators that just couldn't. Do without for three days, they could. Take some of their load out there, possibly, is that, is that what you?
Effingham is for a small household trash.
I got you, no.
So like even Bay, who is our smallest, smallest big load, he would be too much. Yeah, I mean, because and. There again, as soon as it's full, you're done, cause there's nowhere else to put it, you can't store it on the ground, you can't. So, so you wouldn't wanna advertise that, hey, everybody from Acheson that normally comes on Saturday, go out there, you wouldn't wanna advertise it that way, because.
No, I understand, yeah, exactly.
And you're okay, we just leave this here, we have. Yeah, it's payable, enter it, cause we need to leave that there. We don't put this there.
Oh, okay.
All right, I have a look for a motion to approve the purchase order to P one Construction LLC out of the Solid Waste Fund. For a hopper repair um. To the transfer station for the chute, uh the bid for the three eighths inch plate. In the amount of fifty three thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars, do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Tastes three to zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Nine minutes till executive session, although I don't know who's. And county attorney, I believe.
Oh, thank you. If I find another one of these, Jody, I'll get you one.
Commissioners, attorney, HR.
No, I think it's just finance and county attorney. Uh they had to, they're thirty minutes, sorry, I was trying to see.
And this be, no, elected, okay. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session at eleven oh seven. AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that's the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, the county attorney and finance director.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to. Say you guys. Much, and we are back in open session, um thank you. Um and we have about six minutes, and then the IT Director will be here with an endpoint detection and response discussion.
Like more info, not just the setting the R and R, but like what info you wanted to put in on your printing.
Yes, so the thought is you'll have um your notice, and then we're gonna add survey questions and. And the information, which now that I'm saying that, and we kind of have a rough draft up. I think with font sizes, maybe we could get away with one page. Where you do survey questions on one side and the information on the back. Um because I really think with font size, we can have a lot of education on one sheet. Um as well as the the questions being minimalized, so.
Would be kind of cool to have a workshop to figure out a layout.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause we talked about that clip right today, edge about holidays, you know, they could clip on. So if there's any information we can. And then serve.
Yes.
I've been getting quotes on icing.
Okay.
So, but the hot copy is free, you know, that you could.
Awesome.
Printing with an additional sheet.
Okay, so we will then. Okay, need to just review these and then vote on it next week.
Yeah.
That way.
And you may have questions for me to go back to them.
So are. Which one, are you choosing your R and R notice based on these? Okay, okay, so then.
Yeah, I was I was lumping it all into one, like figuring out who's gonna be the best for to do, you know, all of those things, the.
Okay. Uh did we get any from um?
I reached out, I've not for that.
Okay.
But I did reach out, or.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
So I'll be ready whenever you guys are, so I'll be early today, sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine, hi, hi Scott, sorry about that, Scott Howard, IT Director with the endpoint detection and response discussion.
A couple of things that we may be talking about.
Okay. All right.
It's gonna be for Microsoft, and one will be uh for an EDR solution, so.
It's gonna be for Microsoft and one will be uh for an E D R solution, so. But uh as part of our uh remediation effort after that uh cybersecurity incident, we're uh implementing endpoint detection or response. Uh, an E D R solution. Uh, I'm pretty sure I talked about it a couple of times before already. Um. It's basically a a tool that helps us detect and investigate um threats in our environment. Um. It's a little more, it's more comprehensive and proactive than just your your traditional uh antivirus. Um, I've reached out to a couple of vendors and I've gotten a couple of quotes and uh solutions that they um. Were able to provide for us. Um, still kind of evaluating a couple of them. Um, I've got it nailed down to about three solutions. Um, but I need to. Double check a couple of things, verify a couple of details before I I make that that choice. Just so I'm informed and and make sure I make the best fit for the county. Um, they're all pretty similar in in their features and costs and levels of protection, but um. They uh. Come out to be within about ten thousand dollars of each other or fifteen, really. Um. So I have one solution that's kind of a unified solution. Uh, it takes a lot of different attack vectors and puts them all under one umbrella. Um, it's called Cisco Security Suite. Um, the the. Cisco solution, though, is kind of different than the others in that we would sign a three-year um contract with them. Uh, that basically because if you do a year by year, it increases the price by about uh twenty percent. And so I think the uh one-year solution was like sixty thousand a year, but if I sign an agreement, it comes down to about uh forty, forty-one thousand a year. Uh, and then I have another solution called that Lumen. Uh, it comes in, it's a M D R X D R. Uh, which is a managed detection response and uh. X D R is an extended detection and response. Basically, what those are, uh, the managed detection is is a service. Uh, they watch the the logs or the the dashboard. Um, twenty-four hours a day. It's kind of similar similar to how um. The incident was caught in the first place. Uh, it. Somebody's watching and if if there's something that that is kind of critical that like sets off the alarms, somebody calls me or contains that that. Computer that's infected. Um. And that's right, provided through a company called Ed Lumen. Um. Like I said, they're thirty-nine thousand a year. And the third one is um. A solution from. Uh, Crowe, actually, the company that helped us out. Uh. Uh, Sentinel One, it's it's kind of a three-tiered uh. Solution, one is uh with Sentinel One, it's the E D R agent and then uh. They contract through a company called Agile Blue to provide M D R services. And then Crowe. On the back end, if there's anything that that M D R service um finds, they uh. Tell or they they pass it back to Crowe and say, hey, take a closer look at this and they start the whole investigation process. Uh, now that solution's about thirty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, I can go into more detail if you'd like, um, but uh I don't I don't know if you guys want to go into the technical nitty-gritty or not. Um. I know it's not necessarily essential to the big picture, though.
Um, so we have the two purchase orders in front of us. Um, would these come out of your twenty twenty-five budget?
Uh, that is where I I didn't budget for these. Um, these are not budgeted expenses since I I mean. Weren't exactly expecting this to happen to us this year, so um. I kind of wonder, should we? That's why I'm wondering, should we? I don't know if I have it in my budget to to. Enact these changes. Or these these expenses, but um I was wondering if we could potentially use the uh reserved account or reserve fund for this.
Do you have the Microsoft um in your budget for that renewal?
Um, it's well, it's not necessarily, it's a. Not necessarily renewal, but it's a increase to our current licensing.
Okay. So this is above what was budgeted?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think the question is, do you want to approve him to exceed his? Budget or pay for it out of reserve?
So if we pay for, if we authorize to exceed his budget. Then from the standpoint of. Transparency of, we had a cyber incident, we didn't budget for it, we didn't know about it. But we authorized payment through his budget. At the end of the year, we make a budget amendment. And more than likely, the general would have excess to cover that without utilizing reserve.
Right.
Um. I don't know where you guys are at. That sounds like a good methodology.
So can I?
Yes, please.
Can you back off that? What would be any different than the purchase order for the jail? Just it.
Very good point.
Because it was out of. Could have been paid out of the jail budget and then.
And then assess at the end of the year. How much is left over within the budgets?
So, I mean, I don't.
Well, I know, I appreciate, no, I appreciate the thought process.
I don't know how that this would be any different.
So are these budgeted in twenty twenty-six budget?
Well, this is would be for a three-year commitment.
Yeah, so Scott had an E D R budgeted of thirty-five thousand in twenty twenty-six to kind of. For this, um, he may have to alter that number based on the decision.
Correct, it's a little more than I expected.
So to your point, can we alter our previous? Purchase order motion to do the same thing of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean. Because at the end of the day, we don't know until the end of the year.
Right, generally speaking, though, what are we talking about? Do you have any idea? What the number could look like or do we? Is it different every year? So it's different every year, so we don't know. Um, this is around fifty. Thousand, right, roughly, with his ask is in that range, so it would. Probably a better chance that you'd have that amount. I don't know than the.
So let me ask you this question. So if we did it. Just like this, where we make a budget amendment. We get to December thirty-first or the thirteenth month and. We don't have the excess rollover. The same methodology would be taken from a reserve, correct? But in the meantime, our reserve would continue to generate interest at the bigger without reducing.
Taking away. The money that's already sitting there.
Now, so because this extends into twenty-six and beyond. How does that work then? Are we? How can you can we take that from thirty to twenty-six budget if you're gonna pay for it? So he's talking about what a two or three-year. Plan to to reduce the rate. So if you did that. In twenty-five, but it paid through twenty-seven or whatever. Does it come out of twenty-six's budget then? That that portion, or was it never budgeted?
That secure or that Cisco security solution, um, it's basically a contract that's paid yearly, so.
It pays what yearly?
We have to pay pay yearly for it. It's an annual, it it's. It's you're contracted for three years to pay, I think it's twenty-three thousand or a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
But they uh allow you to pay a yearly installment.
Okay, okay. So really, it's only. So really, you're only talking thirty thousand.
Uh, for the Cisco secu- security solution, it's forty-one thousand a year.
Oh, a year, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, you save quite a bit doing, but having the three-year contract, okay. I'm I'm on board with with that.
Budget amendment?
Your idea.
I think so too.
I think.
More than likely, won't need a budget amendment, but.
May we have back that purchase order for the air conditioner to amend that?
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order um. Out of the I T budget to converge one for Microsoft three sixty-five Business Premium. And Microsoft three sixty-five F three in the amount of six thousand, one forty-seven, sixty. Do I have a motion to approve?
Shall move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Scott, do you want this purchase order for the E D R? To be called for a motion today, or do you want to get back to us with which one you're going to select?
I would like it today. That way I can, I'm 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 just, I'm like this close to to nailing it down. Uh, there's just like a couple of details that I'm like, if if this is different than what I'm expecting, then I'm not gonna go with that one, so. Um, I probably will be making a decision in the next day or two.
Okay. Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our I T director. Up to forty thousand, forty-two thousand dollars for our cybersecurity solution. E D R, X D R, M D R, to be paid out of his I T budget for twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero.
On the ledger, when you just write I T. I T budget, zero, zero, one dash six five. Just so it's.
Yep. You got it.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We passed a purchase order earlier today um for a rooftop unit. Electrical supply, lift charge and labor for the jail air conditioner. In the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine, thirty to done heating and cooling. Our motion was to take that out of the reserve fund. Would like to ask for amended motion to take that out of the jail budget for twenty twenty-five. As for the finance director.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Thank you for catching that mark.
Should keep that uniform.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we have four minutes till noon and then we will um have the quarter cent sales tax discussion. Um, for the future of the sports complex.
How will it work if you already choose your agenda? If a financial executive session is rated.
So we have executive sessions after this, we can.
Okay, I think I would like to have a ten-minute one with county counselor and board.
Okay.
Please.
Ten minutes enough?
Yeah. There is one for a financial one.
First one.
A financial executive session.
Attorney-client.
Or that's fine too. Yeah, that's probably better because it would involve Pat maybe more so than me.
Jill, I have a question. What time is the steering committee? Meeting today?
Four o'clock.
At.
Big Ben Center.
That's it, good, thank you.
Once here, I feel like that. Is coming, so I'm just gonna outline um. Kind of a little bit of what to expect today. So thank you all for coming for the noon uh quarter cent sales tax discussion to talk about the future of the sports complex. Um, we kind of bullet pointed out what we're gonna cover today. Um, starting out, we'll have a financial update from our finance director. He's going to go over. Current balances, um, discuss the open current allocation that we um. We allocated the four hundred thousand to Atchison, a hundred thousand to Effingham in December of twenty twenty-two, so he'll give an update. For that, he'll also cover new requests. We'll have a discussion on the new requests we received. Um. Then we will talk about the Atchison Sports Complex future, um. As far as the Atchison County will own um that facility and what it looks like moving forward. Um, and then any additional opportunities for our complexes and sports facilities in Atchison County, so. Those are kind of the bullet points of things um to kind of gear our discussion. So with that, it's noon. I'll turn it over to our finance director. Um, for update.
So maybe I'll come up there. Okay, hi, everyone. So um, Mr. Quinn wanted me to talk about the current balances. So there's four funds currently. At Exchange Bank. They're the trustee of the. Of the whole thing. So. These are as of May thirty-first totals. Um, I don't have June exact yet. The statement just closed yesterday, so. Um, it was one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Eight forty-eight thirty-six. Which was in all four funds. There's a redemption fund, a debt service fund, the payment fund. There's another one, I think of. Yeah, so um, the payments remaining to pay for the rest of. The bonds is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. One seventy eighty-six. Uh, they. The last payment is April first of twenty-six. And the sales tax. In uh sunsets December of twenty-seventh. Okay, next thing was the current four hundred thousand, hundred thousand dollar allocation. So out of. That allocation that the board allotted, it was an eighty-twenty split. Effingham complex still has thirty-nine thousand to nineteen ninety-nine. Available out of one hundred thousand. The Atchison complex has four hundred thousand that was allocated. With seventy-seven thousand, nine forty, oh two remaining. As of today, that's before any other expenses. But then. New requests. Um, I received a letter from. The superintendent of three seventy-seven. To talk about. Potential expenses with the county commissioners. Um, install shade structures, dugouts. Um, install press boxes, convert the baseball infield to turf. Install concrete pathways, install perimeter fencing and replace a lawn mower. So. I didn't add all these up, but I think it's. Over a million for sure. Um, it asks, I don't think there's a list like this that's been provided to me from. The Atchison's complex site. In this detail. So. Again, there's. One point, almost nine million. In total of all those funds, so I think just trying to figure out the future. Of 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 everyone and everything, so. Is there any questions for me about those? Or I give it to them? Okay, you guys are up.
Thank you. Um, one of the things the finance director explained to us this morning is when we hit April first of twenty-six. Exchange Bank will issue us a check for all the monies that they're holding in the bank. Um, we currently have fund two eighteen. Um, we currently have fund two eighteen that's dedicated for the quarter cent sales tax. So the money comes into that fund, so that's where the monies from the bank would go into that fund. Um, Mr. Henderson uh, clarified for us this morning that we cannot set these funds up for endowment. Um. And, yeah, so that's where we're at. And just kind of want to open it up to, to you guys um, to have the conversation of. What the plan is, because it's an eighty-twenty split with the funding as it has been. Um, and to make sure that we all are on the same page and planning ahead for the future to ensure that when the sales tax. Is not coming in anymore, that there's plan, um.
So that, that eighty-twenty split has been since the inception, and so we don't see anything to change that number now. So I would say that. Fairly safely that, I mean, if, if whatever's there, we'll, we'll keep the same split, I mean, there's. You know, questions of, you know, could, could it go one direction or the other? Um. Something else I was about to say, also, after the sales tax sunsets, anything that's left. Will have to be held by the county, but it can be used for maintenance. So it, it, not for operations, but for maintenance, so. I think it would probably behoove both entities to uh. Keep as much as that, because at the end of the day. I mean, well, you'll have that money for the maintenance fund to keep that, you stretch it out as long as possible. If we spend it upfront, it's, it's gonna be, where's it coming from day one? I mean, that's, that's my take on it, um, where this would want to go, whether uh. I'm not even for the county owning, at the end of the day, I would like to see the eastern um. Uh, facility not be in county hands, but that's probably another conversation. Hello?
Um, I tell you, I. Both complexes are wonderful additions for Atchison. And so uh, this, this initiative. Um. Was a wonderful thing back when it came into existence and it's doing its job as we go forward. And so it's really just a matter of making the right decision. In the next couple of years, how we're gonna move forward with this, because we don't want to lose what we have, we want to. Maintain what we have and, and keep going forward with it, um. But you all right here are gonna be the ones that. Give us the suggestions and the ideas of how to move forward, um. We're, we've, we're not gonna, we're not gonna sit up here and try to guess. What's best for Atchison, you have all done it for years and, and. Many of you were, were, were here when this uh, sales tax was put into place and. Behind the planning and everything else, so we want to hear it. Review, if it has to be a collaboration between a bunch of folks. That normally don't get together on a regular basis, at least short term for the next. Year, year and a half, while we're trying to come up with a plan, that's probably gonna have to happen, we're probably gonna have to have people. You know, collaborate and get back and forth to us and until we can figure out the best way forward, but. Um, as of right now, I'm, I'm very happy with, with what I see. Um, now I'm not on the inside, you know, of these, of these operations, but. Uh, you know, I have been a user, it, it's been years, but I have had somebody that actually used those. Facilities and, and I've seen nothing but improvements since then, so. Where do you want to go from here?
I mean, so we're open to just opening the discussion up, because um, we get feedback as commissioners all the time. As far as, you know, what's gonna happen and. We want buy-in from you guys, if you remember when we had the town hall several years ago, it was kind of like an aisle divided, right? Half for the recreation, half for the Y M C A, and we just feel like the collaboration happening in Atchison County right now is top notch. And we have great leadership and we need to come together to figure out what's the best for the complex moving forward. Uh, we don't have those answers, so we're leaning on you guys to help us develop those answers of how we can all work together for the greater good of the citizens of Atchison County. To ensure that we're not co- uh, um, competing against one another when it comes to youth sports or any of the things. But collaborating with each other to make sure that it's, it's a benefit to all, so um. I've, you know, some of the feedback I've heard of. You know, the recreation is an end-all be-all, it's always gonna be here, it's an taxing entity within the school district. Um, the Y M C A is from Kansas City, so what is happens, you know, if Atchison, you know, gets. This is feedback that I've gotten, I know we've all talked about it here and there, so just wanting. Wanting to open up the discussion to ensure that we can make, you know, get on a path of. Of, of good future of all the hard work and investment by some of the people in this room that got this going. That we see that continue well beyond twenty twenty-seven when this, when the sales tax sunsets, so. Um, that, that, if anybody has input or would like to speak to that, I, that's why we're here, yes.
Few questions, so it'd be roughly a hundred thousand dollars remaining to be paid out between the two entities, is that included in the one, one eight seven eight million?
Yes.
So that hundred thousand's included in that, okay. No endowment, but what about a higher trust uh, year in the account to make profit off of the remaining balance?
You, well. The, the treasurer has limitations on how they can invest the funds, but as long as we're consistent with.
Next question then, currently funds have to be expended via exchange bank to the entities that are doing this. Once it sunsets, how does that work?
It would be the county to.
So the county would then expensive, so the county would gain the interest based off funds that are remaining?
Yeah.
And unless there's provision written that remained in the account with that, then it could go away, correct?
Right, that's why I think having the uh, checking account or a C D or something is, is to keep it.
And then the interest would still be based off of the same split, because nature would be garnered to the same percentage of the funds.
Yeah.
It doesn't make a difference, I mean. We'll deal with the funds what we want to do, if it go longer, if it go longer, um. We just hit a snag on our last forty thousand, we can't do unless we do extensive concrete work. Because that's our shade structures and you can't tap shade structures, that's all, which is the base of which is there. So I reached out and said, what's our best plan for that? And so we performed extensive proposal of, some of those are pretty lofty. You know, we had significant data as a board and as a rec department on whether to do truth. You know, there's, there's pros and cons, you're also talking. Wide range of ages using both facilities, that's, that's a difficult challenge when you're talking dugout structure and. And groundwork and um, those types of things, so um. I think ultimately, whatever's gonna be the best benefit to students and patrons of, of our district. Uh, we'd be supportive of, I, I guess I was under depression, the county kind of wanted to get the funds off the books. Um, that's kind of speed like I gotten, if that's not the case, then we could go back and. You know, we, we, we're spending about forty thousand dollars every three years. Just to replace the red shale because of the wind factor that we did on our complex. You know, we weigh that cost versus the turf and, you know, um, so. And that's kind of where we are. Um, I think I'm shaking my head over here, it's probably not the same. Shale, shale likes to blow, uh, we discussed tarping it. Tarp's gonna blow just the same, um, so. You know, and, you know, we had some, some bullpens put in and they were damaged in the month. So, you know, it, it just kind of is a ever winding road, so.
So I guess for me then, does it make sense when? We pay, sorry, I'm. Talking out loud without thinking about this a lot, but um. When the tax sunsets and we have the, the funds, does it make sense to just take the twenty percent and give it to three seventy-seven? Because you guys own it, you can invest it how you need to, and the only reason we would, the county would be involved in the Atchison is we own the, the, the real estate. We own the land, um, because to me. That would make sense to, I mean, it's, it's your project, it's your, your field, you own it. Give you the money and let you invest it as you should and do your projects as you should and we step away.
One point eight million dollars will make a lot more interest and straight down. That, that'd be the only thing I would say, so um, and who knows what markets will do as well?
No, good point.
I just, I, you know, I've always been advocated of, you're sharing to make more off of the, the bulk, but um. You know, if, if it, the wish of the commission is to just disperse it at the end of the sunset, then. You know, we would be obliged with that as well, and then, you know, we'd be. Pass for creating a fund, like you said, doing.
I do now, I thought you said that we, that it had to be held by the county.
Yeah, I, I think it does, we might be able to. But let's look at it at the time, when it comes, we may be able to work something out that has. Because you're, you're limited to making your payments for construction and maintenance, but we may be able to. Juggle budgets to make that payment in a single year in a quicker period.
Could there be a contract with, like, if, if the money was turned over to them that they couldn't exceed that and. And put it towards anything but that, I mean, then put the onus on. They, they could have it, but they would also have to adhere by the same uh, restrictions that. Why the county would have to hold it, so it wouldn't go to uh, operations.
Yeah. I, I mean, I guess I can say is maybe or maybe probably. But yeah, we'd have to look at that in detail of what, what the plan was, but.
I, I think that uh, you said something about our wish was to disperse the funds or what, or maybe. That kind of, well, it goes back to a couple of years ago when we decided to have the meeting at Memorial Hall. And that was, it's like we seen this uh, sunset fast approaching and it's like. We hadn't had any requests or anything for building or anything for, for a long time, it'd been kind of stagnant, stagnant. And then funds had been building up, and at the time, it was our thought, well, maybe we just pay them off early. Well, then that brought a lot of things to light, it's like all of a sudden we kind of exposed the light back on it. And we found out there was a lot of these projects that had just been postponed and hadn't gotten done, so. That's the reason it's like, man, if there's building projects that are like the restroom projects and things like that that need to be done. We need to be anticipating when the sun sets and, and getting those done, um, I. Don't think that there was anything about going beyond probably the original scope and of, of what was being built. I mean, try to finish the project as it was envisioned, uh, I'd say there couldn't be other things added into it, but that's kind of. Mainly, if, if it was, we've got the funds and if they were spelled out, what was gonna be, like the restrooms and things like that. Needed to be put in, let's get the work done, so uh, and then again, we're coming on, this is gonna be really. Not that far away, you know, and when the sun sets, it's like, what's the plan, I mean. There was kind of open ended on the end of this, there was no, nothing to say. Exactly what was gonna happen, three seventy-seven's gonna own that facility for sure. The eastern facility is up in the air, I mean, what will, who will be the ultimate owner? How is that gonna be maintained?
Well, that's kind of up to you guys, right?
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, like, you could keep going with the exact same process you have going now.
But without, but without the sales tax.
Yeah, just the, the fund balance would not go up each year, it would just deplete until it's gone. Or, or you could do like a one-time payment to them and get them off the books and choose to sell. The ballparks in Ashville, or you know, there's, there's all kinds of options, but. Um, you can't just, I mean, you can't just keep going with, without the revenue coming in from the tax until it's, until the projects are done and.
The trick is at the end of that.
Right.
That's.
I mean, and then, I mean theoretically, you just, you can keep going, you're doing it, you don't necessarily have to make any big changes, right? I mean, unless I'm, unless there was something in there that I didn't see. Like, you, you own it, you make a contract with somebody to run operations each year and.
So those were some of the things, um, because being three commissioners and talking, you know, through it. Maybe there's different visions of, of, of continuing to own it as the county, uh, of not owning it. Um, of continuing to let the current manager manage it, doing an R F P for management, like, there's all. There's several different avenues and routes we can take, so. Getting feedback, hearing from you guys as stakeholders is, is very important uh, of helping us. Determine, you know. Information's good for us when making decisions and you guys are the, the ones at the table that know. The pros and cons of all of it, so we're just.
Alright, I'll break it here, so why is the Y M C A or?
So if you remember from the town hall we had, there was interest in. Possibly managing and having a, a, we, it was like an aisle divided that night and we had. Think it's important that we all get in the same room and collaborate and talk through it.
Okay. We're here.
So, currently, A S A F is Atchison Sports and Fitness. That we do our maintenance payment to, and then they contract with Atchison Recreation to manage and take care of the facilities. Um, Lauren, do you want to speak on behalf of the Y or?
Yeah, I can, I, I mean. For us, it's, I mean, the Y's been here since eighteen seventy-two. I mean, we've been in, in this community and we're still in this community. Um, we've been uh. The, the Y M C A, we're now part of a larger association, so our landscape has changed a little bit in regards to the resources. We have to bring to bear to this community. Um, right now, we can't do that to the full extent that we can. Do from the way we operate our youth sports programs. Um, everything from women's, the girls' flag football. Our partnership with the K C Current, the K C Chiefs, all of those different entities. We have those resources now that were a part of, of something. Um, that we weren't prior to twenty-ten. Um, but we're to, we're of the mindset that we don't want to directly. Compete with what's already, what's already here too. But at the same time, I think when you have individuals duplicating services. For certain age groups, you're doing a disservice to the community at large. Um, and I think that with the resources that we now have, that we didn't have to that degree. Prior to twenty-ten, I think that we could um. Definitely do something from an operating standpoint. From providing programs and services at a, at a, at a high level to, to this community that we. Currently, you know, with the landscape the way it is now, don't have that opportunity to do that. But at the same time, we would not be inclined to. Own property outside of what we have right now, we're operators, programmers. And we would, we would uh, as far as from the Y's perspective, not be interested in owning. Property. If that, if that helps you out. That gives you some.
So Derek, from the Atchison Sports and Fitness on the bylaws, like who sits on that committee? Is that something that you could have a Y member sit on the committee? Oh, you sit on that, oh, that's wonderful, okay, so.
Yep. Yep, we are meeting, you know, probably, that, that's pretty much as we needed. But uh, uh, there's nine entities that's involved. They're invited and that's on the board and they appoint their own representative, so. Chamber of Commerce being one of, uh, the, and it's, I'm taking it from memory. Uh, More Hill Mount Academy, Atchison High School, Trinity. B C, and then two people at large, I'm probably missing one there, two people at large. That operate the. Um, what we call the upstart groups, uh, you know, whether it be like. Atchison Ravens, Junior Ravens, whatever the football program was, or, or American Legion Baseball, anybody that is just in that large position. So when this was originally set up, I'll re, review it a little bit more again here, um. Uh, it, it was set up mirrored after, uh, the Memorial Hall prestige to be the. In between the two, and I'll even go back to the history, uh, when we did all of this, it was Steve Shipman. And, and, uh, Don Volinai that set this whole thing up. Uh, we didn't, we didn't have any city participation because there were some political things going on then, so we went to the county. And with that, that's how Happy Ham got dug. Uh, in which you needed a facility, you're playing in a mud hole over there that's now being veiled for hay, so you know what's going on. I think that's what it was. So, and the, the facilities were terrible, but that was the agreement that we had, I think Floyd Oswald was on at the time. And, uh, so it was, it was a countywide project. And the first thing that Don and I did was we wanted to make for sure that there was a maintenance. Factor to this thing because we didn't want it to turn out, nothing against the city, uh, ballparks, but there was a wild agreement. That was with the city as far as having quality, uh, ballparks, you know, Branston, Fourteenth and Laramie, Marl Park and Nathan Riley. And it was garnered around consolidating all those in one location. And the great plans aren't always met, but we probably met eighty or ninety percent of what the goal was here. So the county was in, the county was in as long as they didn't have to put any money into it, and man, we, we made that work. We've got a manager that had taxing entities, so, cause we knew that. Our lofty goals of having tournaments and all sorts of stuff probably wasn't gonna be met, and it wasn't. It wasn't, we couldn't, it was advised by numerous outfits and we sell alcohol, you know, to encourage. Uh, adult participation. Uh, the county chose to put on a law that says we can't sell our, all on, on the site, which is fine. Trust me, it's the Atchison Recreation has no problem with alcohol not being on premises, cause it brings on other problems. Which it did at the other sites. So what we have is a beyond outstanding facility. That the county owns and. By. Just by having it, it's a great contribution from the county to this eastern side of the county. That we all are taxing paying entities. So that's the, that's the, kind of the whole thing on it. When I went to, uh, the previous commission when Jack Bauer was on here and, and some other commissioners, when we were gonna. The maintenance fund was only designed to last for ten years. You might have been on that then, uh. I went to Jack and I said, in twenty fifteen, I said, hey, man. I've got to get in as, on the budget because I'm gonna need another forty thousand dollars a year when this all runs out. He said, uh, uh, we ain't got room for that. I, so I went to him in sixteen and I said, hey, we're getting really close, we're gonna run out of money. He says, let me work on this, and I think, uh, Jack and you and, and I don't remember who was in the first district at that time. Well, it was Jack, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, Bill Paul. Bill Paul.
Yeah, and, uh, he said, let's talk to the bondholders and see if we can't reconfigure it. Yeah, it was great. Not only we got a half a million, we got a whole million. So we have all of, nobody ever fights over the bills, but when there's money involved. We get people coming up and saying, hey, we can do this. So right now, what, this was the same problem we had when the jail was. Was sunsetted and none of the three of you were there, George Ross and all those guys. And I said, hey, you over collected by two hundred thousand dollars, what a great way to set up a, a set aside account. Were you here then, Pat? I think you were. It was either you or Leonard, but. I'm sorry, I'm looking around the room. Rick and I are the only guys that's old enough to remember any of this stuff that was involved. Uh, but what a way, great way to, uh, keep the participation from the county. Involved in the sports complex, and they said, no, we got a deficit in the budget, so we're gonna take that two hundred thousand dollars and put it into our general fund. Okay, well, do whatever you gotta do. But here we are again. Yeah, you got the, the same issue. We have the opportunity of what the taxpayers. Talked about and voted for twenty years ago by a narrow margin, three hundred and forty-four votes. But we got it, and now we have the opportunity to retain. The facility. Whether you want to own by the county or not, what a great, great thing that you have here, just the same as Memorial Hall. You have a great thing to give back to. The community, the taxpaying community. If we do it right, set up a fund, put it in a CD, however we can do it, and just spend just. The interest earned off of it, or set a five percent, whatever it is, and you just use that into perpetuity. What a great thing that you would do for all of your constituents. Now, I'm all for, I've, I've always said, just the way that we drew it up to get the land from three seventy seven. An agreement we had with the school board at the time and Steve Shipman. They bought Frederick's Auto Repair Salvage, whatever it was, but they were, the whole agreement was to. They get to retain the ownership, which that's true, when the bonds were paid off. I think that there. It was the three of us that came up with the eighty twenty thing. The, I, I, I can't put that on anybody else, cause we were kind of a standalone, hey, it's Don and Derek's big adventure, but it worked. And we came up with the eighty twenty that they agreed to. I think that if they, I think with the numbers that you're probably going to have is the one point eight. Is that what we're expecting at the end of December, or is that in April?
That's right now.
Just think about that, there could be way more there, okay?
Yeah.
Why not just give a half a million? The school board has different rules than what the county's, in my opinion. Cause they have, they have things at four oh nine, they have, uh, dedicated funds and. And they can earn interest off of some of those things. I may be wrong, but I think I might be right, cause I remember Roger Reynolds also having. Something when he was the school board president here in town fifteen years ago, and it may have changed, I don't know, but. If you got a half a million dollars, you can work with that. Two hundred thousand, I agree with you. You might as well leave it in there and we just gate, gate, gate cut the proceeds. But I remember shipment at the time says, well, I don't know what ten thousand dollars is gonna do for us, but we'll take it. And that's where we're at now. If we can get it to where it's not only for three seventy seven. But also with the, the overlay of the, uh. Of the proceeds being a four oh nine situation, that's gonna go towards this, this ballpark. It's still gonna keep it off the county and the city, uh, have a more impacts. And I'll add one more thing, and you, you, you need to keep ASAF. I always said twenty years ago, I'm gonna work myself out of a job. But we need to keep ASAF intact. One, that we can still have representation from all the users. There isn't any reason why all these programs that Lauren, Lauren. He, he turned the ship around down there at Hawaii, he did a great job along with everybody that's been involved. But there isn't any reason why there can't be cooperation, which I'm sure there is, I don't know, I'm not on the, I'm not on the rec work. But be cooperation to keep this viable where it's not gonna cost. The Y or anyone else any more than what it's costing. Now, I know there's some things going on between the county and Memorial Hall. And I think that's great. We need to make for sure that we keep that facility open and viable and maintain. But I don't, I don't know that, that if we set this up properly. Uh, with, with the approval of the county counselor and the statutes that's given to us by the state of Kansas. That we can't make this work as a whole.
So Derek, does the ASAF sunset with the sunset, with the tax sunset?
No, because we're, if we're a standalone liaison between the owners. And the managers, and then that way we can receive, th- there's certain entities, uh, you know, and, um. If the burgers ever decide to want to give something from their family trust. They may have a provision in there that they can't give it to a government agency, but they can give it to ASAF. To be invested with the, the corpus of the, the investment or the residual funds. If we do it any other way, we lose that opportunity.
Can I ask maybe a adjacent question to that? The, the bylaws of ASAF, is it? Say, say that that's the only purpose of the organization to act as that liaison? Or is there an opportunity for that to be an entity that can also liaison between, we talked about this. The different recreation groups in the city to ensure that everyone's on the same page with those services being provided because. Someone who moved here, you know, city side, but also as a parent, there is, there is confusion, frankly. There is confusion about, well, if I wanna do, if I want my kids to do soccer, which one do I go to? If I want my kids to do, uh, T-ball, which one do I go to or, or whatever? Um, and there are some duplicates. And it's not the best situation when that happens.
If, if, what ASAF does therefore is just for the sports complex because that's all we set it up for at that time. As with any entity, it can be amended.
Sure.
Uh, and things can be done. Uh, give you a great example, we designed and built it with Benedictine College in mind. They didn't have the two fields that they have now. After we built it, and we got all the specifications from them, the fences are at the right depth. So, huh, what do we do there? Well, you know, we, and then they said, don't worry about it, we'll use it for in a memorial. And then they, they built their own sites. So it's, there's been misogynizing or. Uh, adjustments through the twenty year period. Now, there's been different people, uh, the different players, but. All in all, we have to really remember a couple of things here. It's for. Guys like you, where there is duplication, yeah, there needs to be communication between the, the, the programmers. These guys here are programmers, that's all they do, they don't own nothing. They're, they're not supposed to own anything, they own their facility, of course, but, uh. Uh, uh, these guys are programmers, they put on program, they're Atchison Recreation, as it was explained to me by two directors before. Uh, when they're not, they're not Atchison gets you ready to go play high school and college ball. They're Atchison Recreation and they need an overall, uh, need in the community, the same as the YMCA. They had, they need an overall being involved with the Y. For a long time. Uh, the only people, people here probably longer are Rick's family that's in the room, but. Being, being involved with the Y, they meet a huge need for, for what we have in the community. We are. For a community of ten thousand people within the city of Atchison and sixteen thousand people in our area. Not including probably four thousand come over from Missouri. We are well endowed with recreation opportunities. So, again, getting back to the money thing. I think we have a great opportunity to be responsible for what patrons have been paying in for years. And what we can give to the future to keep our commitments and our ad valorem taxes. At least not increasing to maintain these facilities, and, uh, that's, that's the main thing for me. Is I wanna make for sure that our facilities, we get comments all the time, I'm sure. Uh, these guys here more than I do, but I've heard it from different people that's come from out of town. Wow, we didn't even know this place was here, and that's a whole nother subject as far as, you know, events and programming and things like that, so anyway.
Sounds good, thank you.
I echo a lot of that, I think that it's a really great opportunity, um. And I also think that, like, like what I was saying, there's also an opportunity here to evaluate some of those. Like I said, some of those relationships and make sure we are communicating as ideal as possible. I mean, the city has some recreation things that we do too, we have the pool operations, right? But I know people have come to me and said, well, does Atchison Rec handle that? And I said, well, no, that's us. So, you know. It, I, I really think there's an opportunity, if we're all, if they're all sitting at the same table, except the city, which maybe we can. Sit and just listen for a while since we're not on the, on the group, but if everybody's sitting in the same room already. I feel like that's the place to start with those, to open up those, that communication. Um, and to make sure it's a unified voice of, because I agree that these entities all provide something that the community needs. We don't wanna see any of them go away in any way, um. And by their nature, in some ways, they sort of compete, and so it's important, I think, to have a group. Where you can get together and actually. Talk about who, you know, how are we going to put this out? Because, eh, again, just. Again, coming in as just a community member aside for a second. Is, you know, when we would ask those questions, my wife would call and ask those questions about what to do. Sometimes the answer she'd get from one or the other entity and it's no, no shame in either, it's just, no, we don't do that. So then you have to kind of infer that the other one does, right? But because, in part because there, I feel like that communication part isn't there between them. And even, I mean, there's other groups too, right? You reach out to, you mentioned, uh, a startup recreation groups and, and activities and. If you reach out to the Y and say, do you guys do this thing? I want them to be able to say, no, but Raven Football does it, or they, they just started this program, go call this person.
Well, I, I think what we're doing is kind of drifting into. The financial side of this, uh, this little bit, and that might be a discussion between all of these guys, but I'm gonna help you redirect this back to what you're here for.
No, no, I, no, absolutely, and I think that you answered it being that ASAF has the nine entities and basically all the stakeholders that are here. With a seat at the table that we have the, um, opportunity now to figure out. What we are able to do as far as an investment fund, what the interest can generate and have the finance director and county counselor get their heads together. Get that information to you as ASAF and then you guys sit at the table and figure out, like, what does this look like? How do we all work together to have? The best path forward, I mean, to me, and we are.
We're just advisory.
Yeah, but we have a county commissioner sitting on your board, um, so, you know, that's where you guys can.
The night, yeah, it's the night.
Yeah, no, I, um, but that sounds like, yes, yes, please.
Like to give a reason why the rec feels like they should continue with the sports complex. One, we started with it in two thousand and ten, so we've been managing for fifteen years. Um, average of sixty thousand dollars per year put into it out of the rec fund, so we've invested about nine hundred thousand dollars into the facility ourselves. Okay, uh, just this past year, we had one thousand two hundred and fifty-four kids participating in programs at the sports complex. Alright, there's a hundred and one total teams up there, so roughly over five hundred and fifty games played at the sports complex through our program. Upgrades that we've done up there, we've gotten the restroom concession, uh, parking lot expansion, playground equipment. Uh, we converted field three to a T-ball field, and we've also, um, are in the process of getting batting cages put up there for other users to have. Uh, Mudcats, it's a travel baseball, they come practice up there. Uh, Lady Phoenix Softball, which is another traveling softball team, they come practice up there. We've had B C cross country, people use it for walking. Uh, we allow A E S up there for fun days, and we've had soccer camp, other things like that up there. Uh, the jobs it's created for, for people in the community, um, we're talking forty to fifty jobs per summer. Um, there's a full-time position out there for maintenance, um, which we're happy to do. Uh, this year we started an advertising program up there where people can buy a banner for the, the softball fields, and we've raised forty nine hundred dollars with that. Which will be put back into the complex to help offset some costs. Um, and I, I, I assume that's gonna grow, this is the first year, seeing that some people will see that up there and wanna get more signs. But just through all that, we have, we've invested a lot into that place, that place means a lot to us. We would like to continue to do that. Uh, I know the county has talked about ownership of it, I've talked with my board, we've covered. Uh, I know the county has talked about ownership of it. I've talked with my board. We've covered a lot of bases. If, if need be, we would, we would take it. We would run the cops. Um, if the county owned it, we would pay for the, the maintenance of it. Uh, we wouldn't ask for maintenance funds specifically out of the dedicated account. We wouldn't ask for anything over that. We would cover that with our money. Um, so that's kind of where we're at in the situation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. I think it works well to have. An entity such as ASAF with everyone from the community that has a stake. In the game at the table and then them communicating on. To the county commission just for the fact that it streamlines the process. It makes sure everyone's voice is heard and it's. You're able to get further, right? Like with, with discussion and planning and, um, with all of you at the table, I mean. The outcome has been that ASAF has chosen A R C to, to manage it. So, um. You know, if that continues and, and having Lauren have representation on the board to. All of you, you know, weigh the pros and the cons of, of, of both of them and then determine the, you know, the best recommendation. Moving forward. I don't know. I just. It's really nice to have everyone together to talk about this and, and to, uh.
Okay, so with this said, uh, ASAF, uh, I don't know that we would be our. Are you asking us to also come up with recommendations for the, uh? The rest of the funding or is that something that the county commission wants to do with the surplus?
Uh, what do you mean the rest of the funding? The, the.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have.
The next few years. Add it to what, okay, uh. There've been a lot of good ideas. I mean, if it goes into a fund and it, uh, but between now and then, I. You guys are floating the idea of, you know, giving twenty percent, uh. And letting them, I heard that come from you. Maybe, maybe, uh, three seventy-seven have a way of. Investing it and to, to, to do as well as we could do possibly. So that's a, I, I wrote that down. That's a. You know, that's something that we could consider if it's feasible, if it's legal. I mean, that's, well, I mean.
Oh, no.
But if it, if it is, uh, I, I don't know if there would be a downside to that, uh.
Well, I think there needs to be more information because we don't know the rule behind the treasurer and what the treasurer can do with it. Is that correct, Cap?
Yeah, how it can be invested, yeah.
Yeah, yes, that's. I'm, I'm not prepared to give a report on what the limits are, what the treasurer can do with the investments, but.
Could we, but we offer inciting some suggestions, uh. That could be answered by council on what to do with it?
Sure, sure, sure. Um, you know, before, when we did the latest round of the refunding though, we, uh. We did get some advice from bond counsel about what to do with the. What, what we could do with the funds and what we couldn't do with the funds and that they were, were adamant that it, it couldn't be set up. Um. It, it couldn't be set up in perpetuity to hold funds and only. Uh, and only spend the interest of the things that we were allowed to spend money on for construction and maintenance. But and, uh. So not really allowed to do an endowment and I.
I get the endowment part.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh.
But as you, but if as the county treasurer, well, we're, but. I don't have any idea, but the county treasurer, as she continues to do to generate. Uh, interest funding for a general fund takes some. Funds and, and invest them in CDs and things. Is that correct?
Well, certainly CDs, yeah.
Okay, so if it was a CD and a, and a possibly hypothetically saying that was done. In-house through the county, then it could be put back in there or you could just use it as a. You could set a rule as a county commission that only five percent of that is spent out of that fund.
Well, you're, you're trying to make it look a lot more like an endowment, but.
Why not?
Well, becau- because our bond council has told us we can't do that.
I know, but once we're paid off, bond council, uh.
Well, it doesn't change what the people voted for. It doesn't change.
And nobody's taking away from that. Uh, 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 you know what? We'll ask and we'll just see if we can do it.
And one thing we run into with that kind of language is, uh, you know, current boards of electeds. Binding future boards of electeds to rules of how to spend the money, um, can become a bit of a problem sometimes. So I, that'd be. Something you have to have to look into. Like say, you only spent five percent of it and then the future county commissioners say, well. No, we're gonna vote today to spend ten percent of it.
Right.
Because they're right, mis-elected.
As far as the initial setup, this was a dedicated sales tax collected under that, and I think it has to follow that. Uh, through, even if, uh, we're done with the sun setting. It was collected under that sales taxing and it has to adhere to those rules.
I'm sure that there's. That's the reason we be.
Yeah.
All right.
And as far as the, the four funds currently, so the operating reserve is what is utilized for projects. And that balance was the eight ninety-six, one fifty-two, fifty-eight. So twenty percent of that. For, for USD three seventy-seven would be roughly a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So when we get a list like this, it's just. We need a little more direction and, and communication to know, like, here's, here's what we could do today, like.
We need, we need the same.
Yep.
Like I said, it was coming to me that the county wanted rid of this money. And if we didn't ask for it, we weren't going to get it.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and, just to make sure that. Based on that operating fund, the eighty-twenty split, this is what it is. And then for you guys to make recommendations to us based on those balances of. Hey, we need this now because this is a priority and, you know, and just, and then also knowing what's left in that first allocation and stuff. Um, and we can make some of these for you guys if you like.
So I have a quick question for both parks. As it, they sit now, as the, as your individual parks. Uh, fields sit now, are you in, are you in pretty good shape? I mean, uh. As far as.
The Biden, pretty good.
Well, I, I, I mean, you know, you, you guys just recently funded a, a new concession stand bathroom. Um, there's play equipment. I don't know how long that's been up there, but I don't get out there as much as I used to. There's a big. Play area. Uh, it looks like it's in pretty good shape.
Two years.
Okay, and then I've only been out to your area once just to. Survey it and it looked like it was in, you know, it was a pretty good shape.
I mean, we, we, we've done a lot of work. Um, COVID hit it hard. You know, when it wasn't used for that, now for summer, um. That, that took a hit on it. Our biggest issue is the asphalt. Um, our concessions on a giant hill, there's not a real means of elderly to get to it. Um, we're, we're going with, you know, how does that look with ADA? Um, people like to sit up there, um, in, you know, they're perfectly functional. I mean, for Ragnar and. Um, Sabrina is our, our athletic director and she served on the rec board as well. Um. You know, our. We have, we've had some power issues, um, you know, and some things like that, but everything is. You know, is well, um. Any, anything like, my biggest thing is anything that we are going to use the funds for. Needs to be something that's going to last for the duration. I'm adamant no wood structures, everything in metal, um, concrete over asphalt, you know, for the maintenance sake. Uh, those, those types of things, um, just because you're gonna get the most life out of it. Um, and you never know, on, on my side, you never know what funding will look like. In ten years for, for the school system that's gonna have support. So, um. That was truly, that's really a wish list.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Well, and, and, and I'll add to that, we've. I can't explain how close we were to not being able to do everything that we did. Uh, I give a lot of credit to John Hickson Engineering, uh. We were, we had enough money, even with the bond funds, to do. Two baseball fields and the soccer field at, at the eastern site. It was amazing. It was just, let me tell you, God is very good. We just kept getting, getting help, getting help, getting help. Uh, and, and, and funding was coming in, outside funding was coming in. The bid started coming in a little bit less and. You know, we really massaged it to get what we had. We'd love to have put concrete in. But all we could afford was asphalt.
Yep.
And that, and then. Someday, if I ever get time to write the book, you'll read it all and including the Effingham site. Um, the Rotary Club is what paid for the concession stand bathrooms and the axes of city of Atchison, either the eastern. Site, uh, and it was the same donated funds that built it out there. Uh, I think the Mark Boderaugh had a large participation in that. And then along with a lot of other caring, uh, patrons of three seventy-seven. But there's still, that's when we came to you and said, hey, especially at the Memorial Hall thing. Oh, well, we ain't done with this. And that's what was really nice about the whole, the whole thing. We. We worked on the premise that we could collect these funds till all, all jobs were done for the. Or when it's done. And we're getting there. I think we're all getting there and there's still some things that need to be done. I mean, I was sitting here. Um, one of the things that came up in one of our meetings was, you know, all of those lights are twenty years old. It's what a great time to talk about LED lighting that would be there forever. Uh, but the real nice thing is you wanna change those lights out when it's cold so you don't damage the fields. But, you know, those. That, that's, who knows what that costs? I know we're still working on.
So, yeah, yeah.
So there's, there's things still to be done to trick it out. So it's, uh, the trick it out, that's the wrong way to say. To finish the project. To finish the project and to make for sure, again, that we're physically responsible. To have it going on for twenty, thirty, long after, you, you're gonna be fortunate enough. You know, that you'll be able to watch your grandchildren play on like Rick and I.
Yeah, so I answered your question. Yeah, we're in good, but there's always improvements you wanna make. Yeah, so.
Anyway, we'll still, I think there's still some of those projects still coming too. I think you may even have one, but you. Do you have a list of any of that with you?
I do. I have a list together.
All right, so he can get that to you that would go with three seventy-sevens at least, you'll know. And then, uh, besides that, uh, we'll just go on the direction of, of the commission to. As far as ASAF goes, we could sure meet, start mulling these numbers around, get you whatever you need.
Yeah.
That was just a suggestion from me after hearing everybody's on that at the table.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I need to get on the mailing list, the email list and, and, uh.
When is your next meeting?
When I call.
There you go. Yeah, I, I was just, I, I thank you for that because I, I, uh, I wanted to. We look at the total amount, even moving out to twenty-seven, we've got a pretty good idea added to the eight hundred. Whatever thousand it was, um, so we have a pretty good idea of the, the scope of it. And then, but you guys are on the ground, you know, and so if, if, uh. If we're all on the same page, yes, finish what you need to finish within reason and then. Maintain this amount going forward so that you can, yeah. Uh, so we're on the same page and then this talk about maybe combining efforts with, uh. Well, I, I. At the next board meeting, uh, you know, if you invite me, uh.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it because I, I think it's a good idea. If there's any confusion about. What's going on in action with all the different, you know, activities that go on, uh, and if that can be. In mind, you know, if you guys can combine. Resources and heads and make that work. I mean, that's just, uh, to me, it just makes sense now. I, I'm not. Involved in it, so maybe there's more headache than, than I know, but it just sounds good. I like the sound of it, you know? Mark, you, you brought that up. That was, that was, it came from you, but.
I mean, I, I felt it was related because you're talking about who's going to. Be the entity that continues managing the facility after the sunset. So that's why, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, it's not a money issue. It's not about money. It's just about, you know, it's, to me, it sounds like it's just about, uh. Um, combining the oversight of, of these activities. That's all it is. So that's, it's for a. Different time, but thanks for.
Quality of life.
Right, right, right.
Well, yeah, and I would encourage, um, all of you just to communicate constructive criticisms too because when. It comes from constituents or, you know, you're on a. Local email chat group and you're, you're reading, well, what, what are you signing your kids up for, you know, and hearing. As taxpayers, they want us to do T-ball because it's not being done right at, you know. The Y or whatever the, the discussions are instead of, I can do it better, having the hard conversations of, this is the feedback I'm getting. So how can we work together to better the program together so that we're, we're not duplicating services, but we're, we're in each other's, you know. Court to help promote and together as, as a community, because we're too small to be. To be working against Derek choosing, okay, there's two teams over here, the six-year-olds, two teams over here, which one are you doing like? And that's the conversations you'll, you'll see happening. So just. Yeah.
Anything else from you guys? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Okay, um. Okay, so we have the executive session, ten minutes, finance, county counselor, commissioners, attorney, client.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you, God.
Did you say attorney, client?
Yeah.
It moves the board of county commissioners, recessed an executive session at one P M for this. One P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged and the attorney-client relationship is allowed by K S A. Seventy-five dash four three one nine B two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the four house basement. And those present will be the three commissioners, uh, county counselor and finance director.
Well, second, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
It was on the. Hanky request on that.
Oh, I got it. Did it come?
Yeah.
All right, we are back in open session. Um. Is there anything else? There's, um, we had talked about, we're gonna add. The notice and communications are in our budget hearing. Just reiterating, that's August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, six P M at Memorial Hall. Uh, we have no resolutions today, no more executive sessions today. Um, so I would look for. A motion to adjourn into a commissioner workshop.
So moved, second.
Moved in second and all those in favors, they add. Aye, passes three to zero.
I mean, you don't need me.
You, I mean. Do you need us for anything? So Susan had gotten three votes on.